Good evening. Will our members and our guests please take their seats? This meeting will now come to order. As all members have received a copy of the call for tonight’s meeting, the reading of the call will be omitted. Will everyone please rise and join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Welcome to the October meeting of the Greenwich Representative Town Meeting. My name is Tom Byrne, RTM Moderator. As all members have received a copy of the minutes of our September meeting, the reading of the minutes will be omitted. I do have one proposed amendment to those minutes. This appears on page 11 of the draft minutes that were sent to all members. This is page 11 of 20. Towards the bottom of that page, there is a paragraph that begins Doug Wells, Chairman of the Legislative and Rules Committee, made a motion on behalf of the committee to amend the item as follows. And there were two listed amendments. In fact, the committee had proposed a third amendment, and this is what should be added: Section 9-12, paren A, paren 6, delete, and this was in parentheses in the draft ordinance, in the proposed ordinance, except ashes. And that was in line 1 of that section. So that is, in fact, what the motion was and was adopted. So is there any objection to that amendment to our minutes? Hearing none. That amendment may be adopted upon unanimous consent. Further suggested changes to the proposed minutes. Joan Caldwell, District 10.
Mr. Moderator, I made a review of the amendments on page 15. I think it's a half like 10.
Well, is it a long one?
No, it identifies me on page 15.
Oh, yes, yes.
Mr. Moderator, could you jump forward?
I’ll recount what it is. This is on page 15 of 20, where it refers to Joan Caldwell of District 10. In fact, Joan Caldwell was recognized as chairman of the special committee. Is that?
That is correct. And, Mr. Moderator, on page 18.
So we will just take out of District 10 and put Joan Caldwell, comma, chair of the special committee.
And on 18.
Comma.
Bob Brady, who is a member of the special committee.
On page 18?
Yes.
All right. This is midway on page 18. Robert Brady, takeout of District 5, and a comma after Brady, a member of the special committee, comma. Is there any objection to those changes? Hearing none. That amendment may be adopted upon unanimous consent. Are there any further suggested changes to our minutes of the September 21 meeting?
Mr. Moderator?
Mr. Clark, District 4.
Page 3 of 20, three paragraphs.
I’m sorry, page?
Three.
Page 3?
Three paragraphs from the bottom, second line of that paragraph. It begins, “The resolved account of Greenwich, a gift from Greenwich Green Land,” which would read C-L-P-A-N instead of C-L-P-R.
Thank you. There being no objection to that, that may be adopted upon unanimous consent. Thank you. Further proposed amendments to our minutes of the September 21 meeting. Hearing none and absent objection, the proposed minutes as amended stand adopted upon unanimous consent. Randall Huffman, District 7.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. This evening I come to speak to you briefly to alert you to an event that has been ongoing for much of the last month and will continue in this next week. Since this country was attacked in September 2001, we have sent millions of volunteer servicemen and women to deployment in the Middle East. Many of them have returned with special needs, and the families that they leave behind when they go are often in need of assistance. We’ve been slow to recognize that, but the military has finally realized that by their own resources, they cannot provide the care and assistance that may be needed. As a result, they have encouraged communities to participate in a program which has been called Community Covenant. Many of you may be aware, and you may have read in the paper, that a week ago, our Board of Selectmen unanimously adopted a resolution committing Greenwich to a community covenant, respecting military service personnel and their families. On November 1st, at 3:00 PM at the COAL Auditorium, we will have a signing ceremony at which each of the Board of Selectmen and representatives of the community and of the military will sign the covenant. In addition, we will have participation from public officials, including some of our state representatives, Jim Heims, our congressman, and others. I encourage you to be aware of that. There is a circular flyer looking like this that was outside, which gives you some of the details about this program. I hope that many of you will be able to be present for that event and will join us as we then move forward to a program of providing volunteer assistance where we can. A number of people have said, “Well, that’s not really something Greenwich needs,” nor people in Greenwich. But in fact, that’s not the case. We’ve already identified a number of situations in which there are people who do need care. And it’s not just those who’ve returned from the Middle East in the last few years. There are needs for veterans going back to service many, many years ago, who are not getting the kind of assistance that they could use. And just so people don’t misunderstand, we’re not talking about supplanting the needs of the military or their capacity, nor are we talking about taking the place of appropriate professionals, be it in social services, or medical care, or the like. We’re talking about the kind of volunteerism, the kind of community help that we in Greenwich have always supported and now can take in a slightly different direction than we have been aware of before. The need is great. The program will be organized. We will be creating a permanent organization that will sponsor and support this, and I ask for your assistance and participation. Thank you.
Thank you.[554.12][554.12](APPLAUSE). That now brings us to the call of tonight’s meeting. Mr. Tuthill, for what purpose do you rise? Bob Tuthill of District 4.
Mr. Moderator, given what may be a heavy night, I move that each speaker be limited to three minutes per motion.[591.82][591.82](BELL RINGS).
Is there a second?
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to limit debate for the duration of this meeting, such that each speaker would be limited to three minutes per motion, per item. Because that is a motion directed that would govern the balance of the evening, it is, in fact, debatable. Is there any discussion on that motion? Yes, Mr. Edwards, District 8.
When he says “per item,” well, number one is an item, but there are a lot of sub, or one per sub-item. So that means all the individuals are motioned, and that would be limited to...
Well...
I’m confused between item number one and...
If there were... All right. The question is, how would that apply to our agenda tonight? Item number one will be a separate item. When that comes before us, we will hear committee reports, and then I will call for discussion. If there were no motions addressed to that item, any individual would be limited to speaking for no more than three minutes on that item. If during the course of that discussion there is a motion offered, any individual would be allowed to speak for three minutes to that motion. If we then dispose of that motion and continue dealing with that item, if anyone had not yet spoken on item one, but had spoken on the debate for the motion that was offered, we then, that person would be entitled to an additional three minutes. Mr. Edwards?
It’s not clear between what item number one is and what a motion is. So it seems like it’s unlimited.
A motion to amend, a motion to postpone, those are motions. A motion to refer. So there’s discussion, there’s general discussion on all of the items on our call, except for those that go on the consent calendar. And then while we are discussing, there could be motions, procedural devices under Robert’s rules, and that would allow an additional three minutes if someone had already spoken to debate just that motion.
All right, so on the debate, there’s no limit?
Yes, sir, there is. Three minutes. You may only have three minutes when you get up to speak.
Curious.
All right, I think I’ve explained... Is there confusion as to what this...
(LAUGHTER).
All right. Further discussion on Mr. Tuthill’s motion to limit debate. Mr. Boutell.
Does Mr. Tuthill’s motion extend the committee reports?
No.
Yes.
Not by its terms.
I’m moving down.
When we dispose of it, if you would like to make another motion... Oh, Mr. Dodakis is here, so...[761.00][761.00](LAUGHTER). All right. Further discussion on Mr. Tuthill’s motion.
Right.
All right, I will call for a voice vote, this being a procedural issue. If you are in favor of limiting speakers to three minutes every time they get up to speak, you should vote yes if you want to allow unlimited time. Well, actually, under Robert’s rules, you would be limited to 10 minutes absent this limit on debate. All right. All those in favor of the limit on debate, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
That motion is carried. Pursuant to the notice that I sent to all district and committee chairs over the weekend, based on the reports we received, it is my intention to designate the following three items to our consent calendar. Those are items 14, 15, and 16. Because the Community Development Block Grant resolutions require a public hearing, we cannot put those on our consent calendar, and so it would be my suggestion that they be combined for voting purposes. And that would leave to consider separately items 1 through 11, the special committee proposed changes, and item 17, the GOSE labor contract. So at this point, I will designate the following three items to go on our consent calendar, and if they remain on that calendar, the only things you will hear tonight will be what I am about to say, because those items on our consent calendar, we do not take committee reports or have discussion on them. So item 14 is the appropriation of $215,327 for the purchase of a vacuum truck that’s called a VacAll. Item 15 is the acceptance of two firearms that were awarded to the Greenwich Police Department Special Response Unit as a result of their participation in the Connecticut SWAT Challenge. And item 16 is the acceptance of a gift, authorizing the First Selectmen to accept a gift of $100,000 from the Old Greenwich Riverside Community Center, for which we are very grateful, and the appropriation of that sum to an account in the Department of Parks and Recreation for purposes of making the improvements to Bennie Park. Is there any objection to the designation of those three items to our consent calendar? Hearing none. Will the district chairs please mark your voting cards, consent calendar items 14, 15, and 16, and please poll your delegation? All right. In terms of organization, I think it’s only fair, we’ll take up the Community Development Block Grant next, those two items. And when we dispose of that, I would suggest we take up item 17, so that the Board of Ed People don’t have to sit through our internal discussions on rule changes. And then we would take up items 1 through 11 in order. All right, so at this time, based on, again, the reports that we received, it is my suggestion that items 12 and 13 be combined for voting purposes, and that requires a motion to suspend the rules. Is there such a motion?
No.
It has been moved and seconded to suspend the rules, to combine items 12 and 13 for voting purposes. The motion to suspend the rules is not debatable, and it requires a two-thirds majority to pass. All those in favor of combining items 12 and 13 for voting purposes, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion has carried. So item 12 and 13 now come before us. May we have the resolution? Why don’t we get both of those items? Is Princess Urfeh here? Yes.
Thank you.
It was Princess Urfeh, who’s the Community Development Administrator.
Thank you, and good evening. Item number 12 is the resolution of the Board of Estimate and Taxation authorizing the appropriation of the funds for the Community Development Block Grant Program for year 2010 in the amount of approximately $1,173,151.54. Item number 13 is the resolution of the First Selectmen seeking the Representative Tao Meeting’s authorization to apply for and accept the anticipated CDBG funds for program year 2010.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of those two resolutions? The resolutions on item 12 and 13 have been moved and seconded. Before we get the committee reports, because this... Ms. Urfeh, I understand this requires a public hearing. Is that correct? All right, so at this point, I will open the public hearing, and any member of the public will be free to address us after we get our committee reports. So at this point, I will open the public hearing. We’ll start with Jerry Isaacson, Chair of...
We’re making committee reports.
Committee reports, yes. Are you going to be our first report? Chair of our Health and Human Services Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. We discussed this item. We had Princess Urfeh with us to help us with it, and, excuse me, we compliment that group on their thoroughness and so on. We did make, there were a couple of comments about the fact that so many of the items were, oh, they might ask for many thousands of dollars and receive only 2,000 or 3,000, and so on. We are assured that the committee examined that question and felt that there were other sources of revenue available to complete the need that they had expressed. Anything else I have is really in the form of an amendment, and our vote was 9-0-0, but I can offer those at the appropriate time.
Okay. Why don’t we get the committee reports, and I will come back to you for those amendments. Thank you. Pamela Frederick, Chair of our Finance Committee.
Mr. Moderator, fellow members, guests. The Finance Committee reviewed items 12 and 13 jointly. They were presented to us in detail by Princess Urfeh. The item is the Community Development Block Grant, where we’re seeking to obtain approval to apply HUD grant funds per the proposed budget. That budget is $1,173,151.54. This has been approved by the BET. The budget includes $925,000 of a grant request for 2010. In addition, $188,000, that is program income that we receive from a loan repayment, and $59,000 from a fund reprogramming where they weren’t spent, monies weren’t spent in the prior year. If approved, the new programs this year include budgeting for the community centers, Connecticut Legal Services, YW, YM, sorry, CA, daycare scholarships, and the Old Greenwich Riverside Community Center Child Care Scholarships. These were added in 2010. The entitlement includes $167,000 for public services, $849,000 largely for building rehabilitation, $157,000 for administration, and $216 for contingency. The vote of the committee was 12-0-0 for the budget as proposed in item 12, and for the acceptance of the five-year plan and 10-year action plan, as well as the authorization of the First Selectmen to accept the HUD grant per item 13.
Thank you. Doug Wells, Chair of our Legislative and Rules Committee.
Mr. Moderator, ladies and gentlemen, we had Princess Urfeh appear before our committee last Monday evening, and she provided us with the identities of the new organizations that Ms. Frederick just spoke of. Our committee is primarily interested in the language that enables the receipt of the block grant. We inquired of Ms. Urfeh as to whether or not there were any language changes from the prior resolutions considered last year by our committee, and she reported that with the exception of the sums of money reported and the dates noted in the resolutions, that it is identical to last year’s. Based on the foregoing, we voted in favor of these resolutions by way of a combined vote on 12 and 13, 10-0-1. The one abstention was from District 8 Member, Mr. Bergweger, who explained that he abstained because both he and his wife are on the boards of organizations that will be receiving funds from the block grant.
Thank you. Mr. Isaacson?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. These changes are more in terms of clarification than anything else. Excuse me. In item 12, the second whereas line, line 6, approval of the community development, and we put block, grant, plan, and budget, all in small lowercase letters. In the fourth whereas, line 1, the 2010 CDBG plan and budget, again, small p, small b, with expenditure history, small e, small h. Now therefore be it resolved, line 3, plan and budget, small b, and expenditure history, e and h.
All right. Karen Fosiliotis, who is a member of the Health and Human Services Committee.
And the whereas clause on the top of the page, the sixth line down, Community Development Block Grant, and then in parentheses should be in quote, CDBG, O and C, end quote.
Okay. All right, did everyone hear that? Is there a need to repeat the proposed amendment? Is there any objection to the proposed amendment from our Health and Human Services Committee? Hearing none and absent objection, that proposed amendment is adopted upon unanimous consent. Discussion on items 12 and 13. Any member of the public would like to address us on this? All right, at this point, I will close the public hearing, and ask the district chairs to please mark your voting cards, items 12 and 13, and proceed to poll your delegation. All right, you may notice a new face up on the stage with us. In addition to our regular clerk and assistant clerk, Carmella Butkins, and Dorothea Mylingard, we are joined tonight by Kim Jordan, who did not have a sufficient excuse when Carm told her she would have to fill in for Dorothea when she finally leaves us. So welcome, Kim, and we look forward to your assistance.[1483.23][1483.23](APPLAUSE). All right, we’re still tabulating the... Oh, we got it. We have the vote on the consent calendar items. Those were items 14, 15, and 16. Those in favor, 170. Opposed, zero. Abstaining, none. The consent calendar items have carried. That now brings us to item 17, which is the arbitration award regarding the school administrator’s contract. Steve Anderson, who chaired the negotiating committee for the Board of Education.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Item number 17 is as it appears on the call.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? The resolution on item 17 has been moved and seconded. We will begin with the report of our Labor Contracts Committee and its chairman, Joan Caldwell.
Mr. Moderator, Members of Town Meeting. The arbitration award before us this evening is for a three-year contract between the Board of Education and the Greenwich Organization of School Administrators. It covers the period beginning July 1st, 2010, next July, and extends through June 30th, 2013. You’re being asked to reject the arbitration award, which is kind of contrary to the way things are usually written in the call. It is written that way in order to make the resolution conform with the state statute. So you’re going to have to be very careful how you vote. This is one of those instances that women love, where yes means no and no means yes.[1604.82][1604.82](LAUGHTER). It was a very difficult decision and vote for the Labor Contracts Committee for several reasons. We were extremely, and are extremely mindful, of the concessions made by approximately 1,000 of our employees, including the MC employees of the town, to give the town, or to agree to a wage freeze and to entering into the health savings account. They agreed to wage freeze with the understanding that if we got that, we would not reduce or not cut jobs from their individual groups. Our second concern was over the effect that this award might have on the teacher’s contract, which will go into negotiation barely a year from now. In fact, it’s not even a year from now. And our third concern was on what the effect of this arbitration award might have with other town groups, that is, those that work in the town hall, and particularly the firefighters who are in arbitration right now. We discussed this from every angle, believe me, and it was a split vote, one of the very few times that I can remember the Labor Contracts Committee splitting. We had two yes votes. Yes, in this instance, meaning to reject the award. We had three no votes. No, do not reject the award. The two yes votes, those two individual members who wished to reject this, one of them said he did so because of the mountain of evidence showing that we are paying beyond the going rate on these jobs. The other member who voted this way said he could not accept the award based on the brief that the arbitrator filed. The three yes, the three no votes, those three members, myself included, who voted to accept this thing, said that they were concerned that if we turned down the award and we go back to a second panel, based on what the arbitrators wrote, there is every indication we would do no better. We might even do worse, and it would be money out of our pocket, because we have to pay the expenses, plus the fact that we probably would not enure any good feelings among the administrators. It just didn’t seem to be a wise move for us, and so we voted to accept this award. Now, the town’s last best offer, well, coming into this negotiation, GOSE was asking for three and a half, for a three-year contract with three and a half percent increase in each year. The Board of Education had put on the table for one year. It’s all it wanted, was one year of $0.00. year of zero increase plus enrollment in the health systems, in the health savings programs. That was exactly what we got from the town's employees. After negotiations which went nowhere, a day of mediation, the group went to arbitration, and the last best offers at arbitration changed slightly. GOSA came down in its request for a general wage increase, probably because the numbers they felt might not fly. In the first year, they were asking for a percent and a half; in the second, two and a half percent; in the third year, two and three quarters. The Board of Education held to its zero increase or wage freeze for the first year, but recognizing that there was a possibility we would get a three-year contract, put one and a quarter on the table for the second year, and 175, one and three quarters, for the third year. The arbitrators awarded the first year to the administrators, one and a half percent. The second and third years, they awarded the GWI put on the table by the Board of Education, two and a quarter, two and three quarters. And, I'm sorry, one, please, correct it, one and a quarter, one and three quarters. It also gave the town the health savings account that we were looking for. In addition, it provided for the prorating of salary. It had been the practice years ago to pay an employee, a teacher, who worked part-time as an administrator, for the hours that the teacher worked as a teacher, and separately, under an administrative scale, the hours that he or she worked as an administrator. Somewhere along the lines, that got lost, and we were paying at the higher scale. Now that has been brought back to what it was before. In this bargaining unit, we have 57 and a half employees, rounded out to 58. As of last Friday, the Human Resources Department of the Board of Education says there are three vacancies. One, I believe, if I wrote this correctly, is a principal at Central Middle School. One is an elementary school principal, and I'm not certain of the third one, but there are three vacancies. The cost of this contract, the first year, the difference between what we're paying this year, had there been a wage freeze, what we would have paid, and what we're going to pay with one and a half percent increase, is roughly $113,0781. When the committee, the Labor Contracts Committee, met with the Board of Education, one of the questions that we asked was, how does the Board of Education plan to adjust for this? Mr. Anderson, speaking for himself, because he did not have the opportunity or right at that moment to speak for the board, said that they would be starting to put together their budget in a few weeks, and at that time, he believed that the board would be looking to finding where they could get that $113,000 out. The Labor Contracts Committee, certainly the three of us that voted to accept the award, and one who voted against accepting the award, said, we believe that they have to. We must not allow one group of employees to benefit from going to arbitration at the expense and detriment of other employees in town, and certainly with a loss of credibility to the board, the representative town meeting, and to all of us sitting here tonight. Notwithstanding all of that, we recommend that you not reject the award. Thank you.
Thank you. Pam Frederick, Chair of our Finance Committee.
Okay, good evening. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Joan Caldwell's report, as usual, leaves little addition to add. I did want to note, in addition to what was discussed, that layoff protection was not offered by the town, as it was awarded in other bargaining units, nor, the panel also said that any reduction enforced will be based on skills rather than based on seniority, and we thought both of those were added features that were useful to the town. By rejecting this resolution, the RTM will be accepting the arbitration award. The resolution has already been rejected with a vote of 070 by the BOE. The net cost of the contract increases will be 1.34% in year one, 0.735% in year two, and 1.196% in year three, or on an annualized basis, cost of contract increase 1.34% for all three years. If this resolution is accepted, the result is that the arbitration award itself is rejected, and the town would be forced into a second round, and, as Joan Caldwell pointed out, could result in us receiving less favorable treatment. If the resolution, however, is rejected by voting no for this item, the result is that the award would be accepted, which the committee felt that the town received most of what it requested, other than the year-one percentage increase in the contract. In order to accept the arbitration, we voted 110, with one yes vote, 11 no votes, to reject this resolution and to therefore accept the arbitration. The one vote to accept was due to a wish to send a strong signal from the town and a view that there would be nothing lost if we were to go back to arbitration. The balance of the committee, 11 members, felt that we could risk what is, on the whole, a favorable contract. Again, our vote was 110 to reject the resolution.
Thank you. Bob Brady, Chair of our Education Committee.
Good evening. We met Monday night. Steve Anderson was there to assist. The only thing I would add to what's been said is that on, at the specific question from the committee, Steve indicated that the first-year increase of one and a half percent is the rough equivalent of one full-time equivalent in this bargaining unit. The other point is it does take a two-thirds vote, a two-thirds yes vote, to reject the arbitration award and send it back to re-arbitration. The Education Committee voted one in favor of voting yes to the resolution, nine in favor of voting no to the resolution, and recommends that you vote no to this, reject the rejection, and accept the arbitration award. Thank you.
Thank you. Discussion on item 17. Mark Pruner, District 10.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I rise because many of our unions have done a wonderful job.
Let me just remind you, I apologize, but for all speakers, again, we do have a limit of three minutes. Mr. Pruner.
Hopefully, I'll be shorter than that.
Good.
I rise because many of our unions have done a wonderful job. They have agreed to a 0% increase. This union did not. In fact, what they wanted was a 3.5% increase on top of a 3.5% increase on top of a 3.5% increase for the next three years. These are the highest-paid employees on average in this town. The lowest-paid employees in this town agreed to a 0% increase. The Social Security Administration, for those people receiving Social Security in here, are not going to get an increase because inflation is zero. So these people are saying, we want a real wage increase. We're not talking about an inflation-adjusted increase. The state statutes in Connecticut leave us few options. It's a very pro-union state. The only option we have is to reject this by a two-thirds majority, and that's not going to happen tonight. I'm not arguing that. But what I would ask is that each person here really think about whether this makes sense, that we have to give the highest-paid employees in this town a wage increase when inflation is zero. So I would ask that you all abstain, not vote to reject this, but simply to abstain. And I think that that's a fair way to do this. I think it sends a message to other unions in town that want this same high increase. So please, abstain from voting for this. Thank you.
Jim Buttel, District 8, and a member of the Labor Contracts Committee.
Mr. Moderator, fellow members, I was one of the two yes votes on the Labor Contracts Committee. As Joan explained, my rationale was basically anger, not over the settlement, but over the tone of the arbitrator's report, which I have with me. Let me clarify first, two comments that have already been made that are not factual. In the Finance Committee report, they said that this arbitration has already been rejected by the BOE, by a vote of zero in favor, seven opposed. The BOE does not have the power to reject this item. What was passed was a resolution recommending that the RTM reject this item. It is solely our power. The other statement that was made as part of the Finance Report was that all the union got in this settlement was their wage rate in year one. Again, the biggest win the union got was item one of the arbitration, which was, shall it be a one-year agreement or a multi-year agreement? So they won on that point. That led to the later items. This is not a win, it is not a loss for either the taxpayers or the members of the union. My concern is there's a lot of bias in the report, there's a lot of factual errors. The previous speaker referenced Social Security. The person who wrote this decision has, you and Natalie, decided that Social Security benefits shall be frozen for two years. That is in their rationale. But I just want to read you one item, and it's what put me over the edge. As they talk about Greenwich's ability to pay, it says, "The financial capability of Greenwich has been adversely affected by the worldwide recession. That has resulted in limited growth of the grand list and budget cuts. However, it is the wealthiest town in the state, and even in its wounded state, it has a residual financial capability." Here's the key point. The irony is that one or more of the persons whose acts or omissions contributed to the recession and hurt themselves, their neighbors, the town of Greenwich, the state of Connecticut, the United States, and indeed, the world, likely reside in Greenwich. So this arbitrator blames us, the citizens of Greenwich, for creating this entire mess. Does not blame hedge fund managers that live in New Canaan, does not blame others, state politicians who run up deficits, no, no, just points to, oh, they probably live in Greenwich. This shows such bias on the part of the arbitrator who wrote this decision, I could not support accepting this. And the Board of Estimate, through Mr. Anderson, was in our meeting, saying, we kept stressing that it's not business as usual. Well, my vote in favor of going to arbitration is because I'm refusing to accept business as usual, either in the town or in the state of Connecticut.
I would like to comment, because I thought Mr. Pruner was going to allude to it, when he talked about the system and how he termed Connecticut a pro-union state, and I wonder, Mr. Buttel and members of the Labor Contracts Committee, if there perhaps isn't something productive we might do, if we believe that the panel that supplies the so-called neutral arbitrator is in fact not neutral, maybe we should be addressing our efforts to changing that system, or at least pointing out that there are individuals on there who, in fact, are not suitable for it. So I would encourage whoever within our organization is looking at those larger systemic issues to consider doing something that might have more productivity than trying to shoot ourselves, you know, in the foot today. Mr. Von Keiseling, District 8.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, ladies and gentlemen, and Ms. Jordan, who I'm pleased to see sitting up there, now we have a new, fresh, young mind. I'm Chris Von Keiseling, as you know, from District 8. I've been in the RTM for some 25 years or so, and I've followed it for years before that. And one of the things that has always struck me about the RTM, pro or, you know, for or against an item on the floor, is that this body innately is fair, and I can always depend on the fairness of this body if a case is put before them, or somebody is improperly attacked, or some kind of skullduggery is going on. Fairness is what counts here first, and that's made me proud, and it's part of the character of Greenwich. Now, I was just as incensed as Mr. Buttel when I heard this thing about us, me causing this financial crisis. You know, it's kind of like, I wish-
I don't think they were referring to you, Ms. Von Keiseling.
I was only, I was only hoping, I was only hoping, because usually, the people that cause these crises has usually come out the other side making more money than the people who didn't, and certainly going to be the case here. But I'll always ride the tide. So I was incensed by that, and that's fine for emotion, and as our moderator quite rightly said, it's all right for us to get all up and set, and I'm emotional. But right now, we have to get down to business, and I take the point that the moderator made that we have to go beyond rejecting this. That's a given. But I think we have to go also to addressing the problems of this bias that's been creeping upward and upward and upward over the years constantly, and it's patently ridiculous at this point. They've exposed themselves to such an extreme that I almost think it'd be action against the arbitrator himself. One of our members of District 8 is a member of the Arbitrators Association and thought it might be actionable against the arbitrator as bad practice on his part. But let's get to the real problem of this. Okay, we've got all these union negotiations going on. We had three working unions in this town, the working unions, Teamsters, GMEA, Lyuna, who forewent a pay increase. They made a bargain with us and worked with us. They said, okay, we'll freeze wages if you freeze layoffs. What that gave our BET and other people is a little breathing room, some stability in our financial picture, so they could build and plan ahead. They were working with us for a year. Next year, they're going to come back and renegotiate. Now, our problem here is, we have a sum-zero budget, basically. So if you're going to give GOSA another $10,000 for one of those principals or somebody a year, or whatever those in-between-teacher, leader-type administrator sort of odd positions that have been very deep in the network of the Board of Ed's fiefdom that we can never get year after year-
30 seconds.
-they're going to get $10,000 more, that's going to come out of the pocket of a Teamster who makes $35,000 a year, or a secretary, or a middle manager. That's not fair. We need to support the people who are our partners in this crisis and not reward GOSA. If you do allow this to go on and don't protest it, we have the probability that those unions will be properly incensed, and so much for taking that risk of working with the town of Greenwich as a partner and trusting, and come back, and they will want 4% next year when they come back to readjust their wages after taking a year hiatus. If you want that, there's a far greater damage than the $200,000 liability we have of going back to arbitration and maybe losing 200 grand, which is peanuts against a beach suit proposition.
Thank you.
Please make a stand, please stand on principle on this one, and vote this down. Vote yes to reject.
Further discussion on item 17. Paul Curtis, District 9.
Actually, a question through you, Mr. Moderator, I believe, to Mr. Fox. If this, if the body rejects this contract, I believe that we also have the ability to add comments that will go to the next round of arbitration?
Yes. The statute provides that if the legislative body rejects an award, it shall draft a written reason supporting that decision, explaining its decision. The issue then goes to a new panel of arbitrators, the cost of which is borne solely by the town. That panel considers the written reasons from the legislative body and the record of the procedure before the first panel, and there may be briefs that are allowed to be filed. Mr. Fox, would you care to elaborate further?
You've covered most of it.
Okay. And then that panel would make a decision, and that would be the end of our option. We would essentially be stuck with that unless, like any arbitration award, there was an appeal to the Superior Court, but the basis for that is extremely limited, such as fraud involved, which, you know, wouldn't apply. So as a practical matter, we should consider that second panel to be the end of the line, whatever it came out with. whatever it came out with would be what we would then have to live with.
Thank you. I just want the members of the body to understand that this, if you reject this contract, you have the opportunity to actually have input into the arbitration process. This is the only time the legislative body actually can do that. So not only are we sending a message by rejecting it if we choose to do that, but we also have the ability to actually address the concerns and address what we believe was incorrectly done in that arbitration. That’s another thing to think about as you go to vote to this. Thank you.[639.29][639.29](APPLAUSE).
Thank you. Further discussion on Item Seventeen. Dr. Carlson, District One.
Mr. Moderator, fellow members of the RTM. Over the last 18 months, we’ve had essentially a deflationary situation. It’s not that we’ve had no inflation, is, we have indeed had deflation. In my opinion, it is only common sense that, under those circumstances, no municipal, state, or federal employee should have a raise in their salary. It’s just the basic common sense in running government. This item, if you vote no on it, as it’s stated, would allow one special group of very highly-paid employees to have a very nice increase during a deflationary situation, say about a 1.5%, 2% deflationary rate, and they get something that’s approximately 2, 2.25% averaged out over those years for it. It’s bad. Why vote for a bad thing? What you can do is wash your hands of something like this, which is no good, and vote yes on Item Number Seventeen. That is a good and decent, proper thing to do. Now, in terms of government, people are waking up. It was just last week that Governor Patterson of New York told the people of New York that there was going to be $1 billion in cuts in education and health. This is very strange for a Democrat politician to say in a state like New York, which is usually led in spending. But times have changed. And I hate to say this, but it may be that times have changed for America. We’re in a different world than we were in the 20th century. And stop participating as you would in the 20th century and face the reality. Vote yes on Item Seventeen.[783.01][783.01](APPLAUSE).
Further discussion on Item Seventeen. Irf Porter, District Six.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I rise to urge you to vote no, as you’ve heard from the best-informed committees. At the Finance Committee, the question was raised as to whether or not the Board of Education had an opinion on this, and the answer from Mr. Anderson was yes. And although technically they’re not held accountable for that, their opinion was, seven people, all seven people that voted on it, voted to, as a no vote. The second question that I asked Mr. Anderson was, “What’s the effect on the competitiveness of our education system, given the fact that the 58 leaders of our educational community are the folks that are responsible for managing the crown jewel of our community? And irrespective of how you feel about whether we’re in a depression or we’re benefiting from deflation, the facts are that these leaders are responsible to make sure that they are the good stewards of the crown jewel of our system. And I don’t believe any of those leaders necessarily would advocate for or against this. They’re members of the union, and as a result, they have to go the way the union goes. And if you hear both sides, you find that the compromise that was struck, albeit that the arbitrator’s decision was written in somewhat of a distorted fashion, if any of you have been through arbitration, you all know, if you’ve been through it, that arbitration is not necessarily a fair process. It simply isn’t. There are biases irrespective of who it is that’s leading the arbitration panel. For all of those reasons, and particularly the importance of the educational system to our community, I urge you to vote no.[920.12][920.12](APPLAUSE).
Further discussion on Item Seventeen. Will the district chairs please mark your voting cards, Item Seventeen, and proceed to poll your delegation? This, as you have heard, in order to effectively reject this agreement, we would need a 2/3ths vote of those present and voting. So an abstention, hmm. That’s an interesting, you know, hold that vote, please. I would like to clarify one issue. Given a recommendation that people abstain. Mr. Fox, my understanding is, the statutory requirement is a 2/3ths vote of those present and voting, and an abstention would not be counted as a vote. So if three people voted and two voted yes, what is your, you know, and everyone else abstained, what is your view of the effect of such a vote?[984.04][984.04](APPLAUSE). Oh, not present and voting?
Yes, sir.[1002.04][1002.04](APPLAUSE).
So Mr. Fox has informed us that the language in the statute is not present and voting, it is 2/3ths of the members present. So those abstaining would count as members present, and in effect, would count as no votes. Is that right? Thank you. All right. Will the district chairs please proceed to poll your delegation on Item Seventeen? Peter Crumbine, our selectman for 10 years, prior to that, a member of the Board of Estimate and Taxation, and some of you may in fact remember Peter serving with us here on the RTM. In fact, Peter was a member of the last special committee on RTM rules. Peter Crumbine.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator, members of the RTM. This is my last RTM meeting, at least in an official capacity. I go out of office on December 1st, and there is no meeting on, in November, so the moderator has kindly given me a few moments to say farewell. I have been coming here for 18 years. Four years as a member of the RTM, four years on the BET, and the last 10 years on the Board of Selectmen. Through those years, I have gotten to know many of you in a meaningful way, which is really one of the joys of being in politics. We have not always agreed on every issue, but I have been treated always with courtesy and respect, and I have tried to reciprocate. The RTM is a marvelous organization. It is the embodiment of democracy in action. To paraphrase the Greek philosopher, Sextus Empiricus, “The mills of the RTM grind slowly, but they grind exceedingly fine.” By that I mean, you act deliberately, and in so doing, you make few mistakes. I have enjoyed working with you in the past, and in going forward. My wife Bee, who’s with me tonight, joins me in wishing you Godspeed in making the decision so critical to the town we all love.
Thank you very much, Mr. Crumbine. We wish you all the best. All right. Let me just see what the status of our vote tabulation is. I do, I do have the results of the vote on the Community Development Block Grant resolutions. Those were Items 12 and 13. Those in favor, 157; opposed, 4; abstaining, 1. Those items have carried. That now brings us to the first of the items that have been brought to us by the special committee. Item number one. Joan Caldwell, are you, let me see. Joan Caldwell, who is chair of the special committee, with that item.
Mr. Moderator, on the behalf of the Special Committee on Rules and Structure of the RTM, I offer a substitute resolution, number one, which is the same as appears in the call. The difference in this resolution and the resolution as you saw it in September is that in the description of the Land Use Committee, the Public Works and Town Services Committee responsibilities, we have added in new duties that would be required if the Transportation Committee is dissolved. That is the only change. We took out the others.
All right, thank you. That being offered on behalf of the special committee, it does not require a second, and it is now before us for final action tonight. May we have the committee reports on this item, beginning with our Legislative and Rules Committee, Doug Wells, the chair.
Mr. Moderator, ladies and gentlemen, as indicated by Joan Caldwell, the only change in this resolution from the one that was in the September call is in the Appendix B. It indicates those changes that would be made by way of dissolution of the Transportation Committee and reassignment of those Transportation Committee’s duties to the other indicated town departments, or I should say, RTM committees. Our voting on this item was seven in favor, four opposed, with District Six present but not voting. Those who cast negative votes were concerned that our town is beset by very significant traffic problems, and we therefore need a Transportation Committee to address these problems and report to the RTM. There was also some concern that the Land Use Committee, who would be taking over some of the responsibilities of the Transportation Committee, already had enough on its plate, and to assign the transportation issues to the Land Use Committee would overburden that committee, and they would not have the time to deal with the transportation issues. The discussion in favor of elimination of this committee centered around the inefficiencies of having several committees look at the same issue. It was pointed out that when we have many committees considering the same issue, it makes for difficulty of town officials, proponents and opponents to go to the several committee meetings, and it provides, because of the overlapping jurisdiction of repetitive committee reports when we come here to the RTM. That said, as I said, our vote was seven in favor, four opposed, with District Six absent but not voting.
Thank you. Franklin Blumer, Chair of our Land Use Committee.
Mr. Moderator, fellow members of town meeting. This item was taken up by the Land Use Committee at our meeting last Monday evening. It was presented to us by Ms. Caldwell, Chair of the Special Committee, and by Vince DiMarco, who is Chair of the Transportation Committee. Our vote was one in favor, 10 opposed, no abstentions, with District One absent. Those voting no, the majority of the committee, were concerned that elimination of the Transportation Committee would leave the town with no body within town government focusing on transportation issues. Several members spoke about the importance of transportation issues, including traffic congestion, accommodation of alternate modes of transportation, including transit, bicycling, and walking, and parking. It was proposed, it is proposed that these subjects be assigned to the Land Use Committee, but while land use and transportation are indeed closely related issues, members of our committee, the majority of the committee, considered that transportation was really a different subject. It was noted that relatively few items have been referred to the Transportation Committee in the last several years, but it has frequently taken up items not referred to it where there was a transportation element in the item. Members expressed the view that more items should be referred to this committee. The sole yes vote was cast by the delegate from District Three, who said that there should be no more RTM standing committees than the number of members of the smallest RTM district, which is District Three. Thank you.
Thank you. David Melick with the Public Works Committee report.
Mr. Moderator, members of the RTM. On Monday, October 19th, the Public Works Committee met at the Engineering Conference Room in Town Hall to discuss Items 1, 11, and 14. For Item One, all districts were present, and we ultimately voted seven in favor, three against, with two abstentions. This is the second reading of the item after the September call. The item is of clear importance to the committee as it impacts our responsibilities and appears to address inefficiencies as defined by the sponsoring special committee. Joan Caldwell arrived later, as did Vin DiMarco from the Transportation Committee. The committee’s discussion started quickly with a matter of apparent legal order. Since the item has been amended since the September reading, would they be in order for consideration under the second reading? Well, I guess that’s the purpose, but one member had pointed out, I think, that the statute, state statute for second readings requires no changes. Rather than leave the item, the group decided to consider it under the presumption of it being in legal order. Later, Joan Caldwell arrived and posed that the changes would in fact be acceptable when made after the first reading. And logically, this makes sense, because that gives us the opportunity, after the first reading, to make such changes. Since the rules were not yet in force or town regulation, as we noted with regards to certain deletions from the September call, that there wouldn’t have to show the strike of said items if they weren’t actually in the town code. The group reflected on the commentary from the September meeting. We discussed the apparent effectiveness of the Transportation Committee. We discussed the abundant evidence of quality representation and the good work of the committee. We considered the special committee’s findings as respects how the RTM functions and if the item has merit, and here appears to be the rub. We talked about how transportation issues, but for general taxation and education, seem to be the most prominent issue at hand for our citizens. So it seems that the issue is important, and we have quality folks willing to do good work, which they do. But it ultimately seemed to the majority that the time for such effort was not at the RTM stage. Effective planning needs to take place long before we are presented items for a vote. Planning and project development work takes place before items are developed and well before an item is listed on the call. While the Transportation Committee provides constructive input, the work can take place through other committees. Most importantly, the RTM has other methods of planning, from the POCD to the capital projects process. But we really can’t forget the commissions and boards and our paid professionals that do so much work before we see an item. So we then have ultimately a committee that appears to not be truly effective, given how the RTM is organized, no matter how good the intentions or the output. District Six indicated that a selectmen’s transportation committee might be more effective because it interjects earlier in the process, rather than later on, when we finally find out that what is being posed wouldn’t work or would— District Seven was supportive of the need for the committee to continue in their work. District Four was interested in the Transportation Committee's rebuttal. District Nine remained simply undecided. Thank you.
All right. I'd like to just report the vote on Item Seventeen, and then we'll continue with Item One. This is the GOSA contract, and the resolution before us was to reject that contract. Those voting to reject, ninety-seven. Opposed, sixty-seven. Abstaining, fifteen. Those votes add up to a total of one-seventy-nine. I don't vote, but I am present. That's one-hundred-and-eighty. Two-thirds of that is one-hundred-and-twenty. So Item Seventeen fails for lack of a two-thirds vote to reject the agreement. Okay? So we did not reject the agreement, in other words. Everyone clear on that? It is as if we either took no action, it is as if we took no action on it. We did not reject it, which is what we had a right to do. All right. Continuing with Item Number One. Evan Delman, Chair of Town Services Committee.
Mr. Moderator, Town Services met on Tuesday night. District One was absent. We discussed Item One, and the Transportation Committee has taken up more items than it has been assigned. Did they review more than was appropriate? Or maybe the assignment process should be reviewed to see if it is referring everything properly. The Transportation Committee is redundant at times, as other committees review the same items as they do. Would the elimination of that committee overburden the remaining committees that would need to review additional budget items? Is having an item reviewed by too many committees more detrimental than not having it reviewed by enough? If they were to have one eye-catching aha moment a year that would have been missed if they had not met, is that a bad thing? We voted two in favor, eight opposed, one abstention, and that is reversal of our last month's vote, which was in favor of deleting.
Thank you. Vin DiMarco, Chairman of our Transportation Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Fellow members, we met, obviously, on this item. I did not call for any guests, as it didn't seem like it was necessary. In fact, we rehashed all the reasons, the Special Committee recommendation, for the Special Committee's recommendation to dissolve, as well as the other questions raised by members of other committees that know little about how the Transportation Committee has operated and the energy its members put into it. I'm prepared to answer those questions if necessary. The committee again voted unanimously against the item. Thank you.
What was your vote, Mr. DiMarco?
Three committees were absent. District Three was not among those committees absent. District Three is really always present. Thank you.
Thank you. Discussion on Item Number One. Mr. Huffman, District Seven.
While I'm loath to repeat myself, maybe some of you weren't here last month, or maybe you've forgotten that I spoke on this subject.
We'll watch the replay.
So I'll burden some of you again. I think eliminating this committee would be a very serious mistake. This committee doesn't function always the same as some of the other committees, but then if you look at the focus of the other committees, for example, finance should have a certain perspective on projects that affect transportation, and that should be, in the first instance, a financial perspective. Public Works should have a perspective on such projects, and Land Use should have a perspective on many of those projects as well. But those, in any of those cases, are not necessarily the same perspective. But the Transportation Committee has a somewhat different perspective, and has functioned that way, looking from a broader perspective, and I think often bringing to our attention a different outlook on projects that are critical to the future of this town. And I think if you will look back at the question that was raised at the time of the POCD, if you'll talk to people who have been surveyed as to the most critical issues in town, transportation issues are right at the top, for very good reasons, because, as I noted last week, or last month, rather, most all of us have probably sat on the post road, wondering just what can we do about the situation that we face. And I would encourage that we continue and support the Transportation Committee in existing somewhat beyond, perhaps, the perspective of what the Finance Committee, what the Land Use Committee would necessarily be looking at, because, as was noted, our standard approach as an RTM is a passive-reactive approach to matters that are brought to us at a certain point in time by the appropriate executive or department.
Thirty seconds.
But transportation can look beyond that. I would encourage that they continue to do so, and therefore, I urge you to vote against the elimination of this committee. Thank you.
Bob Cavee, District Twelve, to be followed by Arlene Lamazo, District Six.
One of the significant parts of Item One embedded in the fine print is the appendix. The appendix is the change in assignment of all the committees, as Item Eleven is almost identical, a copy of. What has changed is that the fleet has been left out of assignment to the Public Works Committee. The Public Works Committee has an enormous number of special-purpose vehicles, trucks, et cetera, which, and historically, at one point, the Public Works Committee was the only committee that considered vehicles. One vehicle I will mention is on this agenda, is the VAC haul. It is a vehicle, and many trucks and special-purpose trucks are part of Public Works, and they will be maintained by whatever the successor to the fleet is, and that will be going to Town Services.
Mr. Cavee, so I take it your point is, if we were to dissolve transportation, you believe that Public Works should review fleet rather than?
No, or share. There's nothing wrong with sharing it. There are special-purpose vehicles and fire department.
All right. So you're speaking of the possibility, if we were to dissolve transportation, then who would review fleet? May I suggest, let's see what happens to Item One.
But this is embedded in Item One.
Well, it is, but then there's Item Eleven also.
But then if this passes, what happens to?
We could amend Item Eleven. I mean, you could come back and amend the discussion. See, Item Eleven contains transportation as one of the committees. So if this were to pass, something would need to be done about Item Eleven. And why don't we address that issue?
It's sort of the fine print that's embedded in Item One.
Yes, I understand. Thank you. Arlene Lamazo, District Six.
Mr. Moderator, members of the RTM and guests, I hadn't planned to speak tonight, but I feel compelled to do so at this moment. I was one of the people who felt very strongly that the committee should be disbanded, not because I didn't feel it was an efficient committee, not because I felt the leadership or the members were in any way remiss. In any way, I know they're dedicated and passionate about transportation issues. My strong feeling was that with the new POCD and the recommendation that an advisory committee be formed to deal with transportation at almost a professional level, that I didn't think we had a need for it in the RTM at this point. I think I'd rather see that committee formed stemming out of the POCD recommendation, because that way we will have solutions to the problems. I agree with Randall, and every selectman who ran for office in the past ten years will tell you, the one thing people are craving are solutions to the transportation issues of this town, whether it's alternative modes of transportation, or it's traffic congestion, or changing the lighting. I mean, there are a myriad of issues that have to be dealt with, and I don't think we have solutions at the RTM level. We need to have a body that can come forth with solutions, and then we, as an RTM, can vote, and we can do that in all of our committees, whether or without, I would suggest, without the Transportation Committee, we would be able to vote on those projects and initiatives. That's what we need, are projects and initiatives, not another reactive committee. Thank you.
Further discussion on Item One. Paul Settlemeyer, District Two.
Members of the RTM, I'd just like to comment briefly on the proposal for the POCD Transportation Committee. I do not believe it should be viewed as replacing the RTM Transportation Committee. The POCD Transportation Committee will likely have a limited life, and its effectiveness is unknown. I note that the previous Selectmen's Transportation Committee, which was instrumental in the construction of four bus shelters and the development of the rationale and job description for the position of transportation planner, was dissolved unilaterally by a previous first selectman. Apparently, when the Chair of the STC opposed parking garages and traffic light initiatives, the RTM Transportation Committee can articulate transportation positions without concern about being put out of business. I urge you to vote no on Item Number One. Thank you.
Carl Carlson, District One.
Mr. Moderator, fellow members of the RTM, it is curious, while I was sitting here, to notice that of the people who voted in the Public Works Committee, those who voted no were from Districts One, Two, and Seven. These are the districts that have to do with downtown Greenwich, especially my own, but Two is almost like an appendage to One, and the southern part of Seven is almost the same thing as where I live. We have problems, especially over the last ten years, in District One. A committee like the Transportation Committee is a forum where people, any person, can go and make a statement. It's very important that you have open government, and you have opportunities for people to voice their opinions. Many years ago, people came in to the old Health Committee to complain about the great stink of the harbor, where a town official came the same night and denied its existence. It stunk very greatly, I assure you. In this situation, many strange things can happen in government. Mr. Lash told me many years ago about a consultant's report, which suggested that it would be very good for the town of Greenwich if Millbank Avenue was one-way, and that you had a stream of traffic going one-way on Millbank Avenue and then one-way on Field Point Road, or something very close to that. And I thought it among the most stupidest things that I'd ever heard. Now, if you have something strange like this, that people try to foist upon the town, people need to speak out. And the history of District One, Two, and Seven in the last ten years suggests that there's a number of things at times that people really need to speak out about very strongly, so they don't get it dumped on them. I urge you to vote no on this and keep the Transportation Committee as it is open. The idea that solutions should come from the executive part of government here is contrary to our democratic traditions, that they should come from anywhere that they originate in. And the people can provide that sometimes. Allowing the people to speak in a forum is the health of a democracy. Thank you.
Is there anybody who would like to be able to turn right at the end of the exit ramp on Exit Three on Ninety-five? All right. Further discussion on Item One. Mr. DiMarco.
Just a couple of comments. The Public Works Committee brought up some interesting points, one of which is the process, the way the RTM operates, and that the Selectmen's Committee would be able to get in on the issues ahead of time. Well, I would submit that who is going to oversee that committee? It's only a committee, it's not a department. The Selectmen's Committee I'm talking about would only be a committee, not a department. But on the other hand, who is going to oversee any changes in legislation or any changes in the process? So I would say that the power really is still in the RTM, the power of cutting a budget, the power of taking up items and considering things from that transportation perspective. I mentioned last month, although it wasn't within the study period, which ended in January of 2009, the study period of the Special Committee, the most recent thing, and I would say that this is a really important item, really important issue, as we move forward, and that's the item on selling that little strip of land on Holly Hill Lane. Other committees, of course, took it up. They took up the financial aspects, they took up the environmental aspects, but other committees did not look at it in total. How does that strip of land affect the safety of travel for all users around that property? And I will tell you that the reason why we took it up was because, and I was pushing it, obviously, being a commuter cyclist, bicycle along the post road very often, along that hole in the ground, and I can tell you that the post road is too narrow there as it has existed. I went to the Department of Public Works, and they determined that it is too narrow. But I wanted to use that as an example of what's really important, and that's the legislation that was passed called Complete Streets, dubbed Complete Streets Legislation, where our Department of Public Works is charged with, or responsible for, looking at every single development on our roads in town, to see whether it could be made safer for all users of the roads.
Thirty seconds.
This is really important. This is the kind of stuff that a legislative committee ought to be looking at. I'm not so sure that a Selectmen's Committee is going to do the same thing, and I would like to see that we have the oversight of that type of thing. One other quick thing, I said there was two. The Transportation Committee did also consider, what someone else mentioned recently, was the language, and of course Joan Caldwell mentioned it as well, and it's interesting that she said that because, if the Transportation Committee were to be dissolved, they would expand those responsibilities that the Transportation Committee, over what the Transportation Committee had before. Our committee, the Transportation Committee, felt that that language actually should be drawn into the Transportation Committee's responsibilities should this item fail. Thank you.
Thank you. Will the district chairs please mark your voting cards? Item Number One, if you are in favor of dissolving the Transportation Committee, you should vote yes. If you are against dissolving, you should vote no. Item Number Two now comes before us. Bob Brady, Member of the Special Committee.
Good evening. Item Two is a resolution to create a Capital Projects Review Committee. It is
expand those responsibilities that the Transportation Committee, over what the Transportation Committee had before. Our committee, the Transportation Committee, felt that that language actually should be drawn into the Transportation Committee's responsibilities should this item fail. Thank you.
Thank you. Will the district chairs please mark your voting cards? Item Number One, if you are in favor of dissolving the Transportation Committee, you should vote yes. If you are against dissolving, you should vote no. Item Number Two now comes before us. Bob Brady, member of the Special Committee.
Item Two is a resolution to create a Capital Projects Review Committee. It is a substitute resolution, different from the one that was before you last month. It is as it is in this call. The change is in Section Three, having to do with the election of officers at the initial meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. That being offered on behalf of the Special Committee, it does not require a second. May we have the reports of the committees on this item? Pamela Frederick with the Finance Committee report.
Mr. Moderator, members, this item was presented, or at least the Special Committee was represented by Bob Tuthill. We reviewed this item for a second time following the September meeting. Many of the committee expressed continued concern with some of the shortcomings noted in our September report, including a concern that not all districts will be represented on a committee that addresses district-specific impacts. Also, while there were certain shortcomings in the structure, overall, many of the committee viewed this as a necessary step in the right direction to improve the R T M's involvement in and review of the capital budgeting process. In particular, it was noted that the C P R C would give greater focus on planning and allow for a fuller picture, rather than the current year-to-year approvals that we've done in the past. To address these shortcomings, the committee voted 11-0-1 on a motion to amend by adding a two-year sunset amendment, which will allow the R T M to see how the Special Committee operates, how it might be approved, improved, and then to refine the section of the rules. I will present the amendment to the moderator at the appropriate time. We voted, as amended, 10-1-1 in favor of this item, as amended by the committee. The one abstention vote was made, given a belief that the item represents a vote of no confidence for the B O C.
Thank you. Doug Wells with the Legislative and Rules Report.
Mr. Moderator, ladies and gentlemen, as Mr. Brady pointed out, this is a substitute resolution, and the only change, significant change, there's some spelling errors that were corrected, is in Paragraph Three regarding the election of officers at our September Legislative and Rules Committee meeting. Mary Ferry pointed out that the resolution was unclear as to how the initial meeting of the C P R C would conduct its business and elect its officers, and so we deleted certain language in Paragraph Three, that is, the Special Committee, and the added language to resolve that concern. Our committee, that is Legislative and Rules Committee, took this matter up again last Monday evening, and there were people that had some concerns about the fact that not every district is represented on the proposed Special Committee. The representative from District Four stated her district's concern that there should be district representation. Others believe that the committee was unnecessary in the task of reviewing the capital improvement projects should be specifically assigned to the B O C, and that the R T M does not need more committees. The advocates for this resolution on our committee pointed out that a small committee composed of people with financial and construction expertise would more efficiently investigate and report issues to the R T M. It was pointed out that this is not a committee that will set policy, but it will be set up to investigate the capital improvement projects and report to the R T M, that is, an advisory committee. It was also pointed out that if the R T M is dissatisfied with the composition of the committee, or believes that one district or geographical area is too heavily represented, then we, the R T M, will have the opportunity to vote against the members of the committee who are appointed. We will also have input into the nominations process via the Appointments Committee, because of all our districts are represented on the Appointments Committee, and it will be the Appointments Committee who would nominate the seven members of this committee and bring it back to the R T M for approval. Our vote on this item was eight in favor, three opposed, with District Six present and not voting. Those opposed were from Districts One, Ten, and Eleven.
Good evening. My name is Tim Harkness, and I'm going to be giving the report for the B O C Committee. Mr. Petroselli, our chairman couldn't be here tonight. Our committee voted, took this up, voted three in favor, seven opposed, with two districts absent against the institution of a Capital Projects Review Committee. The B O C has been actively involved in assessing both the operating and capital budgets, and the B O C agreed that several of the functions suggested for the new Capital Projects Review Committee are valid and important. Those opposing the formation of the committee, however, had a number of concerns. First, many of the committee members believe that this proposal, along with the revisions in call Item Number Eleven, ignored the valuable contributions the B O C has been making. The B O C has been meeting with B E T leadership regularly, as well as the selectmen. We have been discussing, considering, and reporting back about many of the issues raised in call Item Two. The B O C's vote reflects a feeling that among many, that this work is already underway and can be handled, and should be handled, by the B O C. Second, there was a feeling that a new committee to analyze capital implies, capital expenditures implies that the B O C will only analyze the operational part of the budget. The two really, in many respects, cannot be separated. They are linked. Capital expenditures will ultimately lead to operational expenditures. That linkage is something that the B O C has been looking at, and something that we believe it should continue to look at. One final note, and this was a consensus among even those who supported Item Two, the idea that there should be only seven people, or a small number of financially-minded people, looking at the capital expenditures, the C I P process, was not something that the B O C thought was a good idea. Ultimately, the capital expenditures that we choose as a town is a normative decision. It's a decision about, are we going to expend money here, not there? Certainly, financial analysis is important, but ultimately, this is, the capital expenditures are really the sorts of expenditures that will impact very greatly the future of our town, and the idea that only seven people would sit on that committee was something that the B O C found very troubling. So again, our vote was three in favor, seven opposed.
Thank you. Mr. Von Kaiserling, do you have a report of the Appointments Committee?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Appointments Committee met again last Tuesday to take up Item Two and discuss Item Fifteen, the one about the appendix, which I believe is a first reading. Well, on the Item Two, you recall that we looked at this back in June, thought about that, and we looked at this again in last September, we gave you a report in September. In September, there was the mood of the committee to, that the Item Two should be changed so that it represented as a standing committee with 12 delegates and 12 alternates from each district, as a normal committee should be. That was a majority vote, I believe it was 11-1-0 on that. We then took up last Tuesday, the Item Twelve, Item Two as a whole, the old Item Twelve, and we voted for that. Item Five in favor, four against, one abstention. One of the problems we had in this meeting is that we had, not approach me, we had three members of the Special Committee seated at our meeting and voting, which is rather a large honor, and certainly the Special Committee's propositions were well represented. We were told by these members that the B O C, that they were told in the Special Committee, the Budget Overview Committee, did not want the burden of capital projects. That was contrary to what the understanding of the representative from District Eight and the delegate from District Four had, in checking with their district delegation members with the B O C. And we seem to remember that there was a memo sent out by the Chairman of the B O C in August stating that they were fully willing to take on that burden, and were generally uncomfortable or opposed to Item Two. We could not decide that, because that was hearsay on both parties. It appears from what we hear tonight that the three members of the Special Committee were misinformed in their opinion about the B O C and its willingness to take on these issues. I don't know how that would have affected our vote that night if we had known the facts as they stood, or could have verified. The votes against it, all the reasons for it were stated, as you've heard from the proponents already. The votes against it in our committee was that there was not a compelling need for the change, and leave it with the B O C. Another member felt it was premature for such a serious action to vote on this, there had not really been even a basic consensus made yet on this issue. And another delegate said that it was a confused procedure to get to this point, with all the changes and amendments and back and forth that we'd had, that there was confusion in the rules and how we applied them, in the jurisdictions, and that it was duplicatory. Again, our vote was five in favor, four against, one in favor. That one I meant. Excuse me, yes. I'm corrected, I'm corrected by our delegate from District Five, he's quite right in my senility. We voted five in favor, four against, one abstention on this item as a standing committee with 12 and 12 representative, not the seven, which we needed to have rejected. But if it were 12 and 12, it would be five, four, one.
All right. Was your committee moving to amend the manner of formation of this committee?
This is one of the problems that we had, Mr. Moderator.
Well, I know District One is, so just...
No, no, the reason, but I'm saying...
All I want to know is, should I call on you to offer an amendment?
No, but as part of our, as part of our report, as part of our report, Mr. Moderator, one of the problems we had in this is that we were making suggestions. We had three members of the Special Committee there, but it was very confusing to all of us as to who would act on these suggestions short of amendment. We got, this process was one of developing a proper resolution, of a back and forth of comments, and we found that, we didn't know whether Legislative was in charge of this item, whether Special Committee was in charge of this item. We talked to our Special Committee members...
Well, the R T M is in charge.
No, I understand, Mr. Moderator, but what we're saying is, how do you...
You answered my question.
How do you get to the floor with an idea that we're talking about through the proper process? The process was so confused, we didn't know, the members from the Special Committee...
Excuse me, Mr. Von Kaiserling, thank you. I'm just saying... Pamela Frederick.
Tough to follow that one. Okay. We do actually have an amendment recommendation. There's a motion to amend Number Two, and particularly this one has to do with the sunset date. When we made our original review of this in September, I probably had a list of about 10 different items that members were concerned with. When we met this month, I think that a lot of those concerns were still present, but in general, we felt overwhelmingly that this was a necessary committee, is something that has been a shortcoming for the R T M in the past, in terms of our method of reviewing the capital budget, and that this was definitely a move in the right direction. With that, we thought that a way to not waste maybe another hour of your time by doing a motion-by-motion amendment of this item was to instead recommend a motion to have a sunset date. And so I'll read the recommendation to amend now. We would be adding a new Section Six dot C dot seven as follows. Section Seven. "The C P R C shall automatically terminate two years from the date the R T M approves the addition of Section Six dot C to the rules of the R T M." That would be the sunset date. "Unless a majority of the R T M members present at a meeting prior to this sunset date vote to extend the term of the C P R C." We felt that through this process, it would allow the R T M to understand better the benefits of this committee, ways that we might improve it, be it amendment to the B O C's requirements in their activities, or an expansion or reduction on this C P R C committee. So our recommendation is to institute a sunset date.
All right. So the motion offered on behalf of the Finance Committee is to amend Item Two by adding under Section Roman numeral Six, C seven, the following language. "The C P R C shall automatically terminate two years from the date the R T M approves the addition of Section Six C to the rules of the R T M," identified as the sunset date. "Unless a majority of the R T M members present at a meeting prior to the sunset date vote to extend the term of the C P R C." That being offered on behalf of our Finance Committee, it does not require a second. Mr. Buttell, for what purpose do you rise?
I'm opposing on behalf of District Eight.
Is this a motion to postpone indefinitely? Mr. Buttell, that motion does not have priority over a motion to amend, so we will have to dispose of this motion to...
According to the R T M rules, it does.
Well, we go, we go according, well, let me see what you are referring to. If you're referring to some summary, Robert's Rules lists the order of priority, and a motion to amend has priority over a motion to postpone indefinitely, which has the least priority of anything. You can get these at Borders and...
[laughter]
Excuse me, Mr. Buttell. I think you're out of order, Mr. Buttell.
I rise to a point of personal privilege that your comment directed me into this...
Mr. Buttell, I made a ruling. You must respect the rulings and follow our procedure, and I expect that you will do so from here on in.
[inaudible]
All right. We currently have a motion, excuse me, we have a motion to amend. Discussion on the Finance Committee, motion to add a sunset provision to Item Two.
[inaudible]
Discussion, what is a point of privilege? What is your point of privilege, Mr. Delman?
According to Robert's Rules, it yields local laws or rulings. And what's going to be held, what's going indefinitely, is in order that Robert's Rules yields to that.
Okay. Mr. Delman, since you have raised the issue, Mr. Buttell is referring to a document that is labeled Appendix F. It is something in the appendix of our rules, which is not a rule in itself. The appendix provides some guidance. Now, I don't know what Mr. Buttell is referring to here, but I can tell you, yeah, here it is. Motion and rank. Mr. Buttell has misunderstood what this means. The items at the bottom have the least precedence. The items at the top have the most precedence, and this is exactly as provided in Robert's Rules. A motion to postpone has the least priority. That is what Mr. Buttell brought up here. He simply misinterpreted it. Discussion on the pending motion to amend. Mr. Wells.
Mr. Moderator, ladies and gentlemen, I think in general terms, the Finance Committee's resolution to provide a sunset clause is a good idea, but I would ask you to vote against it for the following reason. It's a two-year term that she's looking for. Our problem is that this, if it's passed, then the C P R C would not be appointed by the Appointments Committee until the spring at the earliest, given when we're going to pass this, and then a new Appointments Committee would be in place in January to start the appointments process. That means that the C P R C wouldn't really have an opportunity to address the B E T budget in an April meeting. We would really have the opportunity to see how this committee is working the first year. So my suggestion is that you turn down the sunset provision for two years, and then I would address a motion to make it three years, so we'd really have the opportunity to see two cycles of this committee working, and then make a decision as to whether or not you want to keep it or get rid of it.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
I want to make sure we're all on the same page. As I interpret this, if we were to add, if we were to adopt this committee tonight, then it would go into effect in the new term in January.
Right.
And it would operate for the budget that we will take up in May.
Yeah, but...
And the following budget.
Yes, sir.
And the sunset provision would allow those two cycles.
Yes, sir. But what I'm saying is that as a practical matter, given the time it would take to appoint this committee, it might not be until the spring.
I see.
They really wouldn't have the opportunity to sink its teeth into that first budget. They really wouldn't have the opportunity to sink its teeth into that first budget.
You are correct. Thank you. Further discussion on the motion to amend by adding a sunset provision. Mr. Von Kaiserling.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'm glad we're back on point. I think you've heard what the feeling the Appointments Committee is. It's not that we won't do the pleasure of the RTM. Of course, we will do the pleasure of the RTM. It was in our wisdom and our best judgment that it'd be 12 and 12. So let that be. If it should be seven members as proposed without change, of course, we will nominate and will act on it. I think I can speak for my committee. We will even, if necessary, expedite the procedure to give it a fair chance in the kind of concern that Mr. Wells was discussing. We certainly can meet early on in January and get the candidates before the RTM, hopefully so they can act on it in the quickest fashion. I would say to you that, having said that as an obligation, I think the motion before you to put a sunset clause in is wise. I will remind... I will note to you that there will be coming up a motion to table indefinitely. I think the whole proposal, as long as with a lumber of its friends, are ill-advised and ill-conceived for the body, and I would like to see them table indefinitely. But barring that, I think the sunset clause would be a wise precaution. Thank you.
Will the district chairs please mark your voting cards? Finance Committee, motion to amend Item 2 sunset provision. And proceed to poll your delegation. We do require a record vote on this item. Mr. Lory.
Point of clarification, Mr. Moderator. If we reject the two-year sunset provision, is Mr. Wells going to present us with a three-year sunset?
Mr. Wells, the question was if this two-year provision is rejected, do you intend to offer a three-year sunset? The answer is yes. And I would note that if we did adopt this, we could also consider a motion to amend it to three years. So you could adopt this, and then if you wanted a three-year, if such a motion were made, you could do that as well. All right. Dr. Carlson, District 1.
Mr. Moderator, members of the RTM, in the district meeting for District 1 on Thursday night, District 1 charged the chairman to propose a change in Item Number 2 for having 12 members in it, chosen by the districts. And that responsibility has devolved on me tonight because our chairman was taking ill. Mr. Moderator, may I propose the amendment? I propose that we replace numeral 2, composition, with the following. The CPRC shall consist of 12 members, one from each district. The members shall be chosen by their individual districts by normal voting procedure. The rules of the RTM committee membership shall... excuse me. The normal rules of RTM committee membership shall apply to this committee.
All right, and that's offered on behalf of District 1?
Yes, on behalf of District 1.
All right, it does not require a second. Discussion on the District 1 motion to amend Item 2, which seeks to change this into effectively a regular standing committee. Is that correct?
Yes.
Discussion on that motion.
Mr. Moderator, point of information.
Yes, sir.
Given that it may impact how delegates vote on District 1's motion, do we have a voting result on Item Number 1?
Yes, we do. Yes, we do. The vote on Item Number 1, which was a resolution to dissolve the Transportation Committee, those in favor, 30; opposed, 149; abstaining, 3. That item has failed. We are considering the District 1 motion to amend Item 2 to turn this proposed new committee into a standing committee with representation from each of our districts. Discussion on that motion to amend.
I'm hearing Dr. Carlson's motion for the first time, but one thing that leapt out at me was that he said that this committee, if it's going to be composed of 12 members, it's going to have its meetings set up like every other standing committee, that its rules will be set up like every other standing committee. That seems to fly in the face of what the special committee was trying to accomplish with the CPRC, and that is that it wouldn't be a traditional special committee that would only meet, for the most part, when there are items on the call to be addressed. This special committee was designed to be set up so that they would meet on an as-needed basis to look at the CIP, to make meetings of the BET, to understand the CIP process, and so at various times could come back to report to the RTM about what is going on with the CIP, what it's going to mean in terms of future budgets, what the expenses are going to be to the town, whether or not bonding is a good idea. All of these things are the sorts of things that people who are in construction and finance should be looking at. A small committee who can work effectively and not within the constraints of a call system whereby people generally meet nine times a year when call items are brought to it. That's why I think that this idea is not a good one, and you should stick with the seven-member committee that the special committee suggested.
Further discussion on the pending District 1 motion to amend.
Point of information, Mr. Moderator.
Yes, Mr. Von Kaiserling.
We have before us an amendment from District 1 to change the membership of this CPRC committee. Am I correct?
Yes. To change it from a special committee appointed by the Appointments Committee to a regular standing committee.
That's right. And it says...
Is that your... was that your question?
Well, I'm saying...
If you're trying to make a point of debate, please come up. We have a limit in effect, Mr. Von Kaiserling.
I'm not trying to debate, sir.
Then you do not have the floor.
Let me ask a question then from the podium.
It was the... because this affects what my committee in appointments discussed. The question that we had was simply what... who was represented on this committee, not its schedule, when it met or didn't meet. All we wanted to do was have the regular representation on this committee because it was so important, because of all the reasons for it. We wanted to make sure that each district had its proper standing and seat at the table. That's who we're talking about. Whether they meet on schedule, off schedule, I will point out that we, the Appointments Committee, are a full standing committee with all the rights and privileges of the public town services or the Finance Committee, except we do not meet on a regular schedule. We meet at our own schedule, which is totally off the calendar of the call in the RTM because of the appointments. So here's an example with a standing committee, with a standard percent of representation of 12 and 12, and we do not... we can act, and we do act, at this stimulus, if you like, of the selectmen's nominations. We have no control over our schedule. We react to that situation, which I think what Mr. Wells is pointing at. So therefore, I understand from District 1 amendment, all they're talking about is whether they have representation from each district or whether they have seven members. It has nothing to do with whether it's... what its schedule is. In any committee, as I understand it, any committee of the RTM can call a meeting at its own schedule. It doesn't have anything to do with the call. So I believe that the arguments that were made against the amendment were really not pertinent.
All right. We have the result of the vote on the sunset provision offered by our Finance Committee. Those in favor, 98; opposed, 76; abstaining, 1. That motion to amend has carried. So what is now before us currently has a two-year sunset provision. Further discussion, we have pending before us a motion to amend regarding the membership of this committee. Further discussion on that District 1 motion to amend. Betsy Frumman, District 9.
I want to speak in favor of each district having representation on this committee. District 9 and District 4 were excluded from the Special Committee on Rules. We had no feedback. We have... we didn't know what was going on. In fact, we wrote a request to this special committee to discuss a problem that these two districts had in common. The only response we got was from Roger Lurie, who very kindly responded and said he thought it was a good idea. I went through the minutes... remember, this is something that came from two districts. Two districts voted on it. And yet, we got no response from that special committee. We didn't have a representative. We didn't know what was going on. I think it is wrong, when something is as important as capital projects, to have an elite group, and that's what it will be, an elite group, looking at it without feedback to the committees.
Further discussion on the pending motion to amend from District 1.
Fellow members, I made the point in the Legislative and Rules Committee when this item was being discussed, that those in fear of committees being stacked, that though this is a special committee, the appointments will be made by the... nominated by the Appointments Committee and made by the full RTM. So for those districts who are concerned that you won't be represented, there's two points where you have the check and balance. You can appear before the Appointments Committee and press your candidate's case, and if you don't get your result from the Appointments Committee, you can press your case on the floor of the full town meeting. They cited an example of a special committee, a moderator's committee. There's a big difference between this committee and a moderator's committee. The difference being every RTM member has input on who is placed on that committee. You will have input through your delegate to the Appointments Committee, and then based on a vote in the full floor. So if your beef is with a moderator's committee, the beef is with the moderator.
Further discussion on the District 1 motion to amend. Lucy Krasner, District 5. After Lucy Krasner of District 5.
I'll be very brief. I was on the special committee, as you probably know, and I would pick up where Doug Wells left off, by speaking of... in favor of the seven members to this special committee rather than one from every district. We were seeking on the special committee, the idea was for seven financial experts, wizards, hopefully very, very financially knowledgeable people, that would take a look at the proposed capital improvements that were coming along, and not just, as we sometimes vote here, on an engineering study for an auditorium of a million dollars or something, but what the true long-term expense is and how that will be handled. And as contrary to taking this type of matter up in the Budget Overview Committee, we felt that there issues were really the year-to-year budget as presented, and that this special committee with seven technically oriented people would focus on the long-term financing of capital issues. And so we felt that the seven was really a good number. We wrestled with this for a long time, actually, and thought that the seven would be wise instead of having one from every district.
Mr. Clark?
Point of information, please. I thought I heard District 1 say that the Appointments Committee would not be part of the process, but that the 12 delegates that we approved would be chosen by the district today.
That's correct.
Thank you. Because I think Mr. Buttell...
Mr. Dr. Carlson, that's correct. This would just become a standing committee like the Budget Overview Committee in terms of... in terms of how the members are selected.
Very much like that, the actual wording is slightly...
Pardon me?
...from the wording...
Well, all right. Could you tell us how the selection process for this committee would differ for any other standing committee?
None.
Thank you. Evan Delman, District 9.
We are based on no taxation without representation, not no taxation without expert. Every district should be represented.
Mr. Porter, District 6.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. It's going to be a long night tonight if we don't recognize that the special committee, who had representation from all of our districts and who...
Mr. Porter, speaking on the motion to amend.
Yes. I wanted to be sure that you understood that there was not representation, and that was the reason that I raised it the way I did. I am here in support of Mr. Wells' motion for the simple reason that the Appointments Committee has a responsibility...
Mr. Porter, so there's no confusion. The motion before us is offered by District 1, not Mr. Wells.
Excuse me, sorry. So against the District 1 motion and in support of the logic that Mr. Wells gave you, for the simple reason that the Appointments Committee's obligation, responsibility, accountability is for all committees to make sure that you've got the best skills to match the tasks that are identified. And whether that's seven people or 12 people, to me, seems immaterial, but what is material is that the Appointments Committee has the skill sets to do that. We don't do that on a regular basis on selecting people within the district. So on that basis, I would recommend you vote against the District 1 resolution.
Further discussion on the motion to amend. Mr. Cornelius, District 3.
Good evening. I rise in favor of the motion from District 1. My district is small, as we said in the last meeting, but I would be amiss to go back and vote for a committee that does not represent my district. Even if we don't have our gurus or experts right now that can handle it, we're not going to hurt the committee by being represented on the committee. It can't hurt. Thank you.
Christine Edwards, District 8.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator and colleagues. The BOC represents all 12 districts. Many of the people on that committee are highly trained financial people, and we have been very much looking at different departments, et cetera, and capital projects for the entire six years that I've been there, increasing in their kind of view and expertise of really going in depth, looking at budgets, looking at how money's being spent and what's going on. To me, we have enough standing committees. We've been trying to just have one proposal to get rid of one committee, the Transportation Committee, which we didn't want to do. It sounds to me like this is an unnecessary extra committee, and as an amendment, it doesn't even make sense to amend something that shouldn't move forward. I don't know how I could make a resolution to not even have this committee move forward, but that would be certainly my understanding. We already have this. Why are we duplicating further services? It makes no sense. Thank you.
Will the district chairs please mark your voting cards? District 1, motion to amend Item 2 regarding membership selection. And proceed to poll your delegation. All right. Betsy Frumman, your district has a motion.
Mr. Moderator, fellow members, as Vice Chairman of District Eight, I stand to put a motion on the floor to postpone this item indefinitely. The vote in our district was 11 in favor, one opposed. Yes, it was very late at night. We feel that there is quite a lot of discussion still needing to be had, and it should, you know, go on for further discussion and come back in a suitable form. Thank you.
Who's rising? Mr. Boutel.
For a point of information, I greatly talked to Josh. The District Eight motion, as is reflected in the minutes, postpones that, this item through item 10.
I stand corrected.
What we'll do is, we'll get the vote on the pending motion to amend, and then I'll come back to you, Mr. Brown. So I ask the district chairs to please expedite the vote on the District One motion to amend regarding the membership selection to this proposed committee. We have the result of the vote on the District One motion to amend item number two. This is to change the manner of selecting members of the Proposed Capital Review Projects Committee, Capital Projects Review Committee. Those in favor, 102; opposed, 60, abstaining five, that motion to amend has carried. Mr. Brown, District Eight.
Do you want to recite my motion now?
Yes.
Mr. Moderator, fellow guests and members, as I indicated, I stand here to move that items two through 10 be postponed indefinitely. That is a motion on behalf of District Eight.
All right, this is items two through 10?
Yes.
All right. It has been moved to postpone indefinitely, items two through 10. Discussion on that motion. Mary Ferry, District Five.
As far as I'm concerned, there are several fairly non-controversial items in two through 10, and if we postpone all of them indefinitely, then we're throwing the baby out with the bathwater. Item five would allow email calls to be sent to those who requested or agree to it in writing. That would save paper, and there are some people who would prefer to get them that way. Item seven is, regards the permanent retention of records or reports of special committees. When this Special Committee went to find the report of the last Rules Committee, they couldn't find it in Town Hall. They're not routinely kept. It was found in my, in my files. Item eight, the method of marking voting cards really should have a vote of the RTM, and not just be postponed indefinitely. And item 10 is a very simple recitation of the budget planning process. I would suggest you vote against District Eight's motion to postpone all of these indefinitely.
Further discussion on the motion to postpone. Mr. Bergweger, District Eight.
Mr. Moderator, members of the RTM, I am the one member of District Eight who voted against this motion at the district meeting. I think it's a very inefficient use of the RTM's time. We've already been through these twice, and it makes a lot more sense to deal with them now, if you postpone them indefinitely. The rationale given for postponing them definitely was so they can be worked on. If that's the real reason, we should just refer them back to the Special Committee, and have the Special Committee take into account all the committee reports and the comments that have been made, and then either come back with an amendment, or withdraw the item, or reintroduce it in the same form, whatever the committee deems to be appropriate. But it makes no sense to postpone them indefinitely, because it's just a waste of time. Let's deal with them now. Thank you.
Mr. Wells, District Two.
The only thing I would like to add is that to postpone these items indefinitely perhaps sends the wrong message to the town. If you'll recall, one of the reasons why we set up the Special Committee was based on Mr. Lash's request that there be a Special Committee to look at the RTM, to see whether or not it should be, should be revamped, whether or not we should be made smaller. As a result of that, Mr. Morgenad, who headed up that Special Committee set up by Mr. Lash, recommended that while the RTM should not be downsized, perhaps it should revise its rules, take a look at our rules, to see if we could be more efficient, and to do a review periodically. That was part of the reason why our moderator decided that it was time, and looked back and saw that we hadn't done it since 1995, and so that's why we're here. Last month, when these matters were brought before you, it was postponed, without any discussion. Now here we are, as we begin our discussions, and now you're saying postpone it indefinitely. I'm thinking that the people looking in here tonight might be saying that the RTM doesn't want to deal with its own issues, doesn't want to clean its own house, and would rather just simply put things off. I think that there are controversial issues here. Yes, they take time. I'm not happy about taking time any more than you are, but there are issues that you should either vote up or down, and not just push them aside, stick them in your pocket, and forget about them for another day.
Well, Mr. Wells, my understanding is that the Special Committee is done with its work, and doesn't intend to do further work. Is that correct?
I, I hear those out there saying, yeah, we're pretty much done. We've done the best that we can in terms of offering things that we've teed up for the RTM to consider as a whole. We're not invested in them. If you don't like them, vote them down. If you like them, include them in our rules. That's all that we're asking.
Thank you. Further discussion on the motion to postpone items two through 10. Louisa Stone, District 10.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I actually was prepared to speak only to item two, and if, if we, would you explain, if we vote to postpone or not postpone two through, two through 10?
If we were to, if you were to, if the RTM were to adopt the pending motion, then items two through 10 are effectively killed.
Right.
They are gone.
Two through eight.
No, this is, Mr. Brown?
Two through 10.
Two through 10?
Two through 10, all right.
This is two through 10.
So, so if we don't postpone them indefinitely, then we would take them up one at a time.
We would continue immediately with item two.
Then number two, each of these would be having its first hearing tonight, so.
Second hearing.
I don't believe.
This is the second reading. We had the first reading in September.
On two, but not the rest of the most.
Yes, all but 11, all but 11.
Okay.
That's not true.
I don't think so.
This is the second reading of items one through 10, and they are up for final vote if we want to vote finally tonight.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Mr. DiMarco, District Nine.
I rise on behalf of District Nine, in support of the District Eight motion, which we thought was two through eight, but apparently it's two through 10. And we expanded that, and I'll do that at the appropriate time, to make a motion to suspend indefinitely, or postpone indefinitely, item 11. But, but the reason why we supported the first motion and want to make the second motion is exactly this confusion. And the main thing specifically was the second reading. Obviously, we were under the impression that the second reading tonight, or we would only be doing the first reading tonight on items three through 11. So that was a misunderstanding. That's not what we understood in our district meeting, and that's one of the reasons, a specific reason, why we didn't want to go forward with this. We felt that if the Special Committee wanted to bring the, and they said way in the beginning that they could bring one item at a time. I think our committee felt that, our district felt that we should be bringing the second reading resolution forward first, let's get that out of the way, put it in the rules if that's where we want it, and then we can deal with the rest of the resolutions accordingly. Thank you.
Further discussion on the District Eight motion. Mr. Boutel.
Mr. Moderator, fellow members, the Special Committee and Mr. Wells have done a good job sending emails around. One of the concerns in the discussion of District Eight was, with item three through 10, not one of those appears to us in the same fashion it was on the call in September. We then get the report that the amended version, which appears in the call, is no longer going to be the version we're acting on tonight, that there's another amendment, a copy of which one set was provided to each district this evening. So those who say we want to just brush aside, addressing the problems of the RTM, no. One of the biggest problems in the RTM is trying to hash this type of thing out on the floor of the town meeting. What we in District Eight are saying is, the Special Committee, while it did a great job, brought us so much, it's, we are unable to swallow it in one bite. We knew that depending on the action that we took on item one, and that's why we did not apply this motion to item one, that would affect later items. We also had a discussion about the second reading rule. I challenge anyone to show me where in the rules this quote-unquote "second reading" rule exists for the purpose of tonight's meeting. At our last meeting, we suspended the rules to pretend that that existed. That suspension of the rules applied to the last meeting. When we adjourned, as far as I know, Mr. Moderator, that suspension of the rules goes away. So there is no rule currently, because we did not suspend the rules tonight, to once again pretend that the second reading rule exists. So whether it's a first or a second reading confuses matters even more, because, in my opinion, there's no such thing, because we didn't suspend the rules a second time to pretend there was. So what Eight is saying is, just send it all back, postpone it indefinitely, and we're not asking to send it back to the Special Committee. One of the things that the rules states, as they currently exist, is the group charged with reviewing and fixing the rules is the Legislative and Rules Committee. So in the next session of the RTM, come January, the proper group for addressing our rules can be the ones in charge of it. Now I'd point out, Mr. Wells, who's been the spokesman of sorts for the Special Committee, is the chairman of that committee. The member of our district, the sole member to vote against the motion to postpone, is also a member of that committee. That is where rules changes should initiate from, so we ask you to support it, bring it back, one at a time, in digestible pieces, so that we're not trying to iron everything out on the floor of the town meeting.
Mr. Curtis.
Ladies and gentlemen, I'm not going to belabor Mr. Boutel's points, because he made almost all of mine. I would only make two comments. The point about a first reading and second reading, the reason I questioned it was, is that Mr. Pruner interrupted and postponed those items last meeting. that Mr. Pruner interrupted and postponed those items last meeting. We heard reports only on 2 of those items. We never heard reports on 3 through 8, or 3 through 9. So what constitutes a second reading? Well, we don't have a rule on it, so we rely on the moderator to guide us through this process. My second point is that by postponing indefinitely, as Mr. Boutell and Mr. Brown have suggested, we do no harm here. The RTM will not stop functioning, okay? We've been doing this for many, many years, okay? We can modify our rules and change our processes, but we have to do it in a thoughtful manner means. My last point is, when our delegate to the Legislative and Rules Committee was asked at our district meeting about the votes from the Legislative and Rules Committee, we asked, well, typically, that committee votes on the merits as well as legal order. Well, our delegate said they voted on the merits of all of these resolutions. They did not, I repeat, did not, vote on the legal order. They are the Rules Committee. That is what they're there to do. I would highly recommend that you support District 8's motion, and District 9 will be following on with another one to do the same thing for item 11. I also would recommend to our Rules Committee that the first rule that comes before this body is the second reading rule. Let's get that process laid out, and then we can figure out how this is supposed to work and the way that the body wishes it to work. Thank you.[1101.48][1101.48](Applause).
Lucy Krasner, District 5, to be followed by Franklin Blumer.
I would certainly support what Mary Ferry said, that there are some of the items, and I would agree with the ones that she chose, seem to be fairly simple. For instance, the one I was from our special committee going to bring to you all tonight, or bring as a motion, was the one about each person signing the voting card themselves rather than ups and downs on fingers. That seems like a pretty simple thing to decide tonight. One other, and the others that Mary mentioned as well, I would go along with her separating them, that some seemed a bit simpler than others to go along with. One of the reasons that the special committee wanted to have most of these issues discussed tonight was because the members here have been members of the RTM for a term, for two years. We will be having some members who are not returning for personal reasons, for not being voted in again, and a lot of new members. We felt that as much as possible should be upped or down from what the special committee's work was done with the, we'll call them old members, existing members of the RTM, that those decisions could be better handled by people who'd experienced the RTM and were somewhat more knowledgeable than having perhaps a chunk of new people who might not know how various things had functioned. But I would certainly go along with Mary's suggestions to let's take some of them up. It really isn't that late right now, and I think the simpler ones, we really can take up this evening.
Mr. Blumer, be followed by Dr. Carlson.
Fellow members of the town meeting, listening to the debate this evening, I'm a little uncertain as to whether we've got the right motion before us. The motion is to postpone indefinitely, and as the moderator said a few moments ago, that is a motion to kill. I'm prepared to vote on some of these items this evening, particularly the ones that Ms. Ferry described to you. I therefore intend to vote against this motion, but I think that there is a great deal here that ought to be further worked over. And I think that the appropriate motion for that would be a motion to refer to a particular committee with the expectation that that committee would then bring it back to us when it's appropriate to do so. Mr. Boutell has told us that the committee that he has in mind is the Legislative and Rules Committee. I sit right behind Mr. Wells, and he groaned when that statement was made, but still, a motion to postpone indefinitely is not a motion that puts the item in the hands of a body which will bring it back to us. And I think that what we need is a motion to refer to a particular committee. If this motion is voted down, I will offer such a motion on an item-by-item basis, or I'm quite happy to defer to somebody else to do it, but a motion to refer all of these items, not to refer all of these items, but simply to postpone them indefinitely seems to me to be the wrong motion.
Dr. Carlson.
Mr. Moderator, fellow members of the RTM, that some of the items that would normally be before us tonight, I think are important reforms. And to go home early is to throw the baby out with the bathwater, so to speak. I think the most important reform that we have is part of item 6, which calls for a second reading for revisions in the Charter. I think that is very important. In view of some of the attempted Charter resolutions that we've had in recent years, and how momentous the change would have been in the character of town government had some of them gone through, I think that anything that allows a second reading on Charter revision is a very, very good thing. And to put off this indefinitely essentially quashes that, at least for this term. Now, I'm to be sure, I would chuck out the last item of item 6, but I pass the rest. That is the meat of it. And some of these things are very easily handled. I understand the Claims Committee members don't want the Claims Committee item, so we could vote that down for them very quickly, and a couple of common sense items, we could immediately pass through. Given additional 40 minutes, I think we could move through this and take the vote on item 2 almost immediately. I vote, I ask you to turn down the District 8 motion on this, even though it'll get us home. The reforms are actually somewhat important, actually quite important.
Christine Edwards, District 8.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator and colleagues. I want to just say that Mary Ferry's comments are very simplified, and it sounds very reasonable. But I just want you to see what you'd be printing on your own printer if you're getting this by email. And of course, I don't have all my stuff up here. We're cost shifting something which should be printed out and sent out to all of us, so we have that. And we don't have situations where I've had email breakdown, we've all had situations perhaps with things coming into our Internet, being failed, whatever. There seem to be, oh, well, oh yeah, that's a great idea. But when you start looking at it, I think we need to slow the process down, and this is what District 8 has brought forward. We can always bring these issues of, should we do email? Should we do this? I certainly want to have everything come in the mail to me, where it's being printed off at a much less amount than it is at my personal printer, as one example.
Christine Edwards, we're talking about a motion to postpone indefinitely.
That's what I'm saying.
We are not talking about the merits of the item you are now referring to.
Fine, my point of postponing indefinitely here is, we can always bring these issues up with more clarity and in a slower motion, because once a decision's made, it's made. And I'd like to see it move forward more slowly and therefore postponed. We can bring these items up again through Legislative and Rules and through other manners. And I think that we should really slow the process down here and vote to postpone indefinitely. Thank you.
Will the district chairs please mark your voting cards? District 8 motion to postpone items 2 through 10 indefinitely. If you are, if you vote yes on this, I'm sorry. A majority yes vote would have the effect of killing those items, and they would disappear from our call. They would have to be brought back by some proponent in the ordinary course of getting items on our call. If you want to continue with taking up item 2, you should vote against us. So I ask, we will need to await the result of that vote before proceeding further. So I ask that you expedite the vote, and we will await that result.[1611.38][1611.38](Laughter). All right, we have the result of the most recent vote. You know, I thought Mischief Night was Friday.[1633.46][1633.46](Laughter). We have the result of the vote on the District 8 motion to postpone indefinitely. Those in favor, 80; opposed, 75; abstaining, 2. That motion has carried. Item 11 now comes before us. May we have that? Mr. Tuthill, yes.
Mr. Moderator, resolve that appendix be descriptions of standing committees of the appendix to the rules of the representative town meeting be amended to read as follows. Anyway, it's the same as appears on the call. And I would like to be recognized, you know, to make a motion to postpone indefinitely when it's appropriate since what's just happened. Thank you.
You don't want to let Mr. DiMarco make the motion?
Just say, whenever it's appropriate.
It has been, item 11 now is before us for a first reading as we were, if we're consistent with what we did in September. So at this point, why don't we go directly to District 9? Mr. DiMarco.
For the same reasons that I mentioned, in support of the District 8 resolution, the District 9 committee also made a motion, or asked me to make a motion to postpone indefinitely item 11, which I guess may have already been done. Same reasons.
No, not yet. You're the first.
I'm sorry, I am making the motion then, right now.
All right, on behalf of District 9.
That's correct.
All right, that motion is now before us. Discussion on the District 9 motion to postpone item 11 indefinitely. Mr. Tuthill.
It seems appropriate, given the others' proponents, that this be also postponed indefinitely, in the hopes that, again, Legislative and Rules picks up all these items and works on them.
Thank you. I will call for a voice vote, this being procedural. All, if you are in favor of postponing item 11 indefinitely, which effectively kills it, you should vote yes. All those in favor of the motion to postpone item 11 indefinitely, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
Aye.
That motion has carried. That brings us to the end of our agenda, there being no further business to come before the meeting. This meeting now stands adjourned. Thank you all for coming, and have a safe trip home.